Okay, well, good evening. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for September the 3rd. It is 7 o'clock. And would you call roll, please? It's 6 o'clock, sorry. Would you call it roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, absent. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hammack.
Here.
Councilmember Haques.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
There.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Mayor Protim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here. Do we have anyone for the invocation? Okay. Would you rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some people that would like to talk to council. Both of them. Okay. We've got Mr. Story on the hurricane. Is it coming here? No. And Commissioner Bell, if you don't mind, we're going to have the chat, we're going to be talking about the Children's Advocacy Center in the agenda. Is that okay?
Please.
Thank you. So, at this time, Mr. Story, would you like to approach and tell us your story on the storm?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm George Story. I live at 128 Main Street, and I want to talk tonight about Hurricane Dorian. It's going to pretty well hit Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, and Virginia. And I think we should have maybe a one-minute silence to pray for those poor folks that are going to be in its way. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. Would, what's the pleasure, council? I think a minute might be long. Would you like to do that? What? Okay. Let's do a moment of silence for the people that maybe suffer or could suffer from Hurricane Okay. Thank you. Great. Let's move on to any announcements of council. Frank?
Mayor, members of council, I just want to make an announcement. When I was at my last meeting for the sanitation district, the folks that did a job with our guys on 9th Street by Washington School, they really were really pleased with the cooperation and the help that Canyon City Road Crew gave them to get that project done. And it shows us how different entities can work together and accomplish goals that's for the betterment of their jobs, the betterment of the town of Canyon City, and the citizens of Canyon City. So, kudos to our guys from the Road Crew from Sanitation District.
Yeah, that's 4th Street. It's very nice. Thank you.
Very nice.
It is.
Very nice.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, then, it's tomorrow morning, we are going to be on KRLN. Who is going to attend?
I can be there.
Okay, Ashley? I'll be there. All right. And then also, tomorrow at 2:00, we have the mayor's meeting. There are six of us. And also, we've added the mayor of Silvercliff and Westcliff because we're an exciting bunch. But there are six mayors in the county of Fremont. This week, we're meeting, this month, we're meeting in Rockvale. And Commissioner Bell usually shows up, and we appreciate that. So, it's a good time. Anything else? We have a general government meeting tomorrow night at 6:00. And we're going to be talking again about zoning for the river property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. And we see that the parking lot is going in where Constantino's used to be. We can clean down. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Could we have Acting City Administrator review the consent agenda?
Yes, mayor and members of council. Item 7A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on August 19th and the special city council meeting also on August 19th. 7B appoints DeeDee Clement to the planning commission for a term that will end on July 1st of 2021. 7C awards a bid for a boiler for the Canyon City Police Department. That's bid number 3019 to wind supply of Canyon City not to exceed $18,640.60. Item 7D is authorize the city administrator to sign a new lease agreement with the Child Advocacy Center for a temporary reduction in lease payments. 7E is to receive and file a list of bills.
Okay, I noted that the boiler came in quite a bit under what we put in the budget for.
It did.
That's great. Great. Okay, then, who's representing the Children's, Child Advocacy Center? Oh, there you are. You're sitting in the back. Would you come on up? And we'd like to hear from you, if you could. And then we'll vote on the consent agenda. Is that okay with everybody? It's going to have to be, because I just called it.
I can sit back down.
What are your name and what you do for the advocacy center?
My name's Lori Jenkins, and I'm the executive director of the Child Advocacy Center. And I'm here tonight to ask for a reduction in our lease payments for the following year for 2020. Kinder Kids Child Advocacy Center was a program under Family Crisis Services until August 6th of 2019, when myself and the executive director of Family Crisis Services, along with their board, decided that it would be in the best interest of Kinder Kids to become its own nonprofit agency. And so, we applied for our own nonprofit agency on August 6th, and it was granted on August 21st. So, we are now our own independent nonprofit 501Z3. And so, I'm asking for a reduction in the rent for the year of 2020 to help with the sustainability of the CAC for one year. We are grant-funded, and we were under a two-year grant through Family Crisis Services. Some of those funds are eligible for pass-through, but unfortunately, rent dollars and operating expenses are not. And so, by separating, we will not have the ability to use those rent dollars for 2020. However, we've already written a grant through Vail, and we are in the process of writing one for VOCA, but VOCA will not take effect until 2021. And I think I gave you guys a five-year profit and loss projection. Those are based on the numbers that we have seen so far this year and the projected expenses that we've able, that we've been able to identify.
What's your lease payment now?
I'm sorry?
What is your lease payment now?
It's $1,500 a month.
Okay. What would you be asking for?
I'm going to leave that up to you. I mean, obviously, the least amount I pay, the more I have the ability to raise funds and cover those through the next, you know, through 2021. By not having a rent payment, that is $1,500 that we don't have to come up with each month, we are working on a very, very limited general fund budget. All of our grants are also reimbursable. They are not paid in advance. So, we have to be able to have at least three to four months in reserves in order to pay out those expenses, and then wait at least another 30 days to be reimbursed.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, in the lease agreement that's in your packets, it's $1 for the year of 2020 is what we've put forward to council.
I thought I saw that. So, where was the, can I, where'd the $1,500 come from?
I'm sorry?
Where'd the $1,500 come from?
From Pryor.
Pryor. Okay.
That's their current lease through the end of 2019.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Ms. Smith? Go ahead.
I'll wait till we hear from Debbie Bell.
All right. Let's have Commissioner Bell step forward. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to stand up and speak. It looks a little bit different from the side of the podium, I have to admit. First, I would simply like to say thank you to Canyon City for giving me this opportunity to stand before you and to kind of give you an update on the county's position as far as the Child Advocacy Center goes. So, unfortunately, the CAC has proven that there is a real need. I had never even heard of a CAC until they came to me, and they would mean Lori, came to us and started talking about the need for such a thing. So far this year, they have already seen and interviewed more than 80 children. And in a community this size, I think that's an absolute tragedy. But the reality is, it's something that we need to have. So, this is something that Fremont County was so excited from the inception to be able to help support. We have already given $30,000 in actual cash, not in any kind of in-kind donations, because we've seen this as a really wonderful collaboration of a lot of different agencies that have come together through some state associations, through county, through city. I think so many people came on board with this. As you probably all realize, it can be very difficult to have everyone see the same vision and be in support of one goal, but it's actually happened in this case. And in fact, Councilman Haques, you just spoke of the wonderful things that can happen when we all come together and work as one unit. And I'm here agreeing with you this evening. Our Department of Human Services truly believes that the CAC is critical for child abuse prevention as well as child abuse intervention. So, speaking strictly from a human services standpoint, this is something that we really truly do need. So, I would simply like to let you all know, whatever the city's decision is tonight, the county plans to continue our very, very strong support of the Child Advocacy Center. And I would just urge you with my whole heart to continue to support the families, the children of this community, and to approve this agreement for a $1 lease for the year of 2020. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mayor Preston. The, I would just like to say that the city, when it received the grant of this property, it was, what we were able to do is sell a different property and then use that money in our, for real estate purchases that, that I think benefit all the citizens. This particular building that the Child Advocacy Center is in right now is essentially paid for by donation to the city. What we do in assigning this lease is essentially forego the $1,500 a month that if they were not there, we would not have anyway. And so, and so, I would just like to add my support to this request. I think it's appropriate to be evaluated on a year-by-year basis whether there should be any lease money paid by the Child Advocacy Center. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hammack. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I would just like to let the city council know that I had an opportunity to speak with Lori about the CAC's decision to go into their own independent nonprofit and how the many advantages that will bring to the CAC. And that the county has committed $30,000 in the past. I believe DHS has committed more money for 2020 as well, that this is an in-kind donation based on land that was donated to us. And I also had an opportunity to speak with the DHS Director, Stacy Quiddick, who's in the audience. And she said that anything that we can do to reduce the trauma on our children is worth 10 times the money that is spent. And in this case, there's no money spent on the city's behalf. And in my conversation with Lori, she was, is really clear and apparent that she's a go-getter for getting grant money and fundraising. She doesn't see any intentions of this being a chronic ask, but just to help her get through this first year to get on her feet. And I have confidence that she will be able to achieve that opportunity. So, obviously, I also have my support for the CAC and those kids in reducing the trauma to them that has long-term effects. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Same, same. That's what I wanted to say was, it would, it would do our community a disservice if we took a donation that was given to us and not gave it back to an organization that was helping our community in such a great, such a great way. So, I'm in support.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner.
Thank you. Is your building leased on this five-year? Where's it at? Under rent?
Yes, it is. It's six from the bottom?
Yeah, I see it. I found it now, thanks. I was looking for a lease. Confused me when you were renting. I really don't have anything to do with funding. It's just curious. I see a substantial increase in 2021 with salaries.
Yes. So, currently, the salaries that you see on there, I was, I've been being paid as a coordinator. I am the only full-time employee, and my board has expressed the interest of making sure that our salaries are competitive with other CACs in our region. So, we went back to a salary survey done by the children, the Colorado Children's Advocacy Association, and we, those numbers are based on what their salary survey says that we should be making based on the number of children that we see and based on the overall budget that we have. So, that's a gradual increase to get us there. I also, I don't anticipate us ever having probably more than two full-time and one half-time employee at this point.
And we're talking about the lease taking first, the lease taking place January 1st, and you're going to survive throughout the year somehow?
Yes. So, we had a National Children's Alliance grant for 2020 that covered our rent. We still are under that obligation of that grant. Because it's a child advocacy grant, they cannot pull those funds regardless of us separating from Family Crisis. So, we still have rent through the rest of this year.
Okay. Any other questions? Lori?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a motion that we approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Can I just ask you to hold up? We have one more person. Heather Gutierrez. Would you like to speak, or? I'm sorry.
No, absolutely.
Hi. I'm Heather Gutierrez. Thank you for letting me address you. I'm one of the nurses that works at St. Thomas More as forensic nurse slash sexual assault nurse examiner. And I wanted to speak about what the Children's Center has done for us since we've started seeing our kids there. It's been a lot more holistic and more focused on the child and the family, and, and in my opinion, has created better outcomes. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. And the ability that the, to have the children interviewed before the sexual assault nurse gets there has been hugely beneficial for the nursing team to make sure that we're not asking duplicate questions, making the children confused, a lot of the stuff that happens when multiple people ask a child questions when they're abused or assaulted. So, I just wanted to let everybody know here that it's been a very great thing to have for the sexual assault nurses at St. Thomas More. And I'm hoping that you guys will approve this for the CAC, because it's beneficial for the kids in this county and the city. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Now?
Yeah. Well, I, I just want to say thank you for coming up and standing before us. I know it is nerve-wracking. I've been on the other side, too. And even though I consider each of these folks very respectful equals in our position, I get really nervous, too, when I'm on that side. So, it takes a lot of courage to do that. But I would like to make the request that we adopt the agenda and consent agenda for today.
Okay. So, the lease reflects $1 for 2020. We don't have to make any changes?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure. I understand that.
Seconded.
Seconded. Are there any discussions on that motion?
I do have one thing, too.
Yes, ma'am.
I just also wanted to make sure that we recognize DeeDee Clement in the audience. She's being appointed to the planning commission. I know she's a very busy woman in our community, and we're really pleased to have you on board as well.
See, I was going to make her stand up and come to the podium and all the other stuff here. You know, we just make her feel.
Yeah. You can come and speak.
No, that's fine. Yes, thank you, DeeDee. Thanks for doing that. Mr. Meisner?
Ryan, I guess, on item, on page 2, item B, we have apparently some kind of a $5,000 or $500 allotment. Are we paying $500? What's the deal there? Don't look at me like that.
I'm sorry. Which item are you talking about?
Page 2. The lease.
Of the lease? Okay. Is this the utilities?
Right.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, it's up to $500. We are covering utilities because it is part of the annex building as a whole, and the utilities are not separated.
I think the majority of the building is occupied by our police force.
It will, yes. Police force is using the building, and we will also be doing some renovations there in that building as well.
Yeah. Are you still looking, Mr. Meisner?
I'm good.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, made, it's been made and seconded. Would you go ahead and call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques? Or, sorry, Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Yes.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a very, very nice facility. Appreciate it.
Very nice people, too. Very caring.
Tough job. This is where I was going to call DeeDee up, but I guess we can forego that. Is that okay? You'll get your chance once you get up here on the panel, right? Will you be here, will you be here tomorrow night? Because it's a combined meeting, right?
It is.
Oh, good.
We're putting you to work tomorrow at 6:00.
Okay, great. At this time, then, can we have the Acting Administrator's report?
Mayor and members of council, my report is here, submitted. There are a couple of things that I do want to highlight. The community agency funding, we have begun to receive applications for that. We typically have members of council as part of that committee, and I guess I'm asking for which two members would like to participate this year.
It looks like Mr. Meisner. Did you, I was just going to...
Dolly helped us last year.
Dolly? Great.
Amanda helped us last year.
Can you have three or just two?
Yeah, I was here, too.
We had like four or five of us here.
Did we have more than two?
We did.
I would love to be a part of it.
I think the more, the more people that are available, it lessens that conversation you have between the committee and council in terms of why did we do what?
Yeah, we'll just post them as public meetings, then.
Yeah. That'd be great.
They're very, actually, really inspiring and uplifting meetings, because you get to hear from so many people in the community that are doing incredible things. Yeah.
That's great.
The only other thing that I want to note in the Administrator's reports, we had petitions submitted last week for candidates for city council. We did receive, it's not noted here in the report, because the report was submitted before the deadline, but we do have one candidate for write-in for mayor, and that's Tony Greer.
Okay. You forgot one item, though. Acting Administrator, isn't it, is it your birthday today?
It is.
It is.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I solemnly declare this meeting dedicated to Ryan.
Wow. That jumps right out there. Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
And many, many more. Okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, then, I'm going to move on to...
Mr. Mayor, I'm very sorry, but I do have a question, and mostly, it's for the city council. And it might just be me, but I just wanted to get a feeling from you while we're in a public meeting and we have this opportunity. And it has to do, actually, with the finishing up of the clock tower. And we have proportioned some money to be renovated, to continue more upgrades at Centennial Park, to fix up some of, or replace some of the smaller pavilions and extend the fishing extension into the pond to make it even longer. And a part of me is feeling like the Centennial Park is actually looking really incredible and really good right now, and wondered if it might be more prudent to save some of those funds to go towards other projects that are upcoming, to kind of spread those investments in town. And that could include the clock tower instead of being just a parking lot, a parking lot, maybe doing a few things to make it a little bit more of a pocket park, or make the clock tower look a little bit more like it's supposed to be a gathering place. It could also include some things at Constantino's. I think the public is really, you know, we've torn down that horrible, well, I don't want to use the word horrible, but it was looking pretty bad, Constantino's. And so many people said it looked better as a pile of rubbish than it was standing, and they're excited and want to see something happen there, probably something more than just a parking lot. And also, the business owners are really eager to see a little bit more development at Macon Plaza. And I just wanted to get a feeling how you would be in interest of being more prudent with our spending and our money to maybe spend that money maybe some, in some other to maybe spend that money maybe in some other places in the town.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So, do we have a master plan for that area yet?
The clock tower does have a master plan. It's part of the Centennial Park master plan of connecting Centennial to downtown. There's also a plan at Macon Plaza. Yeah, so it's at Third Street and the plan was to have kind of almost like a yellow brick road from Centennial to Veterans to Third Street and exactly where that parking lot is. It could have a public restroom, it could have, obviously, it needs to have parking, but also could have some picnic benches and some things like that.
Look a lot like what Buena Vista has in their downtown kind of pocket park kind of thing. They have a restroom and kind of sitting benches and they have a splash pad in there, don't they?
Which I think would be incredible to have, even just a little tiny something there for the families.
Gathering area, but public restrooms in our downtown area would be really nice.
So I was, it is, the money is designated for those items at Centennial Park, but as Dolly or councilperson Gonzalez mentioned, it's still part of the Centennial Park master plan and it could, and we could reconsider some other investment areas as well that could use a little bit more attention.
Okay, Mr. Hammerick?
So, my question is, it sounds like a good idea, but sometimes the devil's in the details and I was just wondering what your thinking was, would this be money that we, that we're scheduled to spend here in 2019 that we would designate for a different purpose? Or are you thinking of $20,000 or...?
I believe in my conversation with Ryan Stevens that it's money that's already been designated for 2019 that maybe it'd be better to hold on to for something else. That's just my personal feelings.
Yeah, the pavilion and the fishing pier, those are budgeted items for this year. So I believe what Mayor Protim Smith is asking is to forego those projects this year and put that money back towards a future project at one of these other locations.
That's, yes, that is what I'm requesting and if we want to pursue replacing some of those smaller pavilions and extending the pier even farther, then maybe seeking GoCo grant or maybe in a future time. But we haven't heavily invested in Centennial Park and it might be time to allocate some of that somewhere else.
Ms. Hockes?
You know, I don't have any problem with doing certain things to help improve the area, but just like I mentioned to Rex when he came in and talked to us about the other stuff, I'm the kind of person that, what I want to see is figures. I want to see dollars that people feel it's going to cost to accomplish these goals that we're looking at. Because, you know, a lot of people are saying, where are we getting all this money? Okay, we did over $100,000 for that parking lot. We did over $300,000 for Gus's place. I don't know if, did we already close the deal for the place along the riverfront?
Skyline Steel? We, yes, we purchased.
That's, between all these things, that's over a million dollars, folks. And so, what I want to see is, I want to see figures for any project that we're going to look at. And I'm not saying it's not a bad project, but I want to know so we can let the citizens know where the money's coming from, okay? Are we keeping, taking it out of the general fund? Do we have an account that says we have X amount of dollars to purchase buildings or whatever and X amount of dollars to bring them up to codes that people want to see? That's what I want to see. And I think the public would want to see that because they're starting to ask, where's all this money coming from? So my, my goal is, I'm not against it, but before I would vote for it, I want to see a dollar figure for the project. And that's my goal.
So, Councilman Hockes, does that mean you're willing to have that conversation? Because I didn't, I didn't want to cut the Parks Department short if they're going out to get bids. It'd be nice to know ahead of time what we're looking at.
Yeah, I want to see dollar figures for any other project we decide to do in the city, okay? Whether it's the clock tower area or other things that we got going, just like we have figures designed for what money we're going to use for the streets, where's the budget at. I want to see stuff like that for all the future projects that we're going to do because there's a cost estimate to all this stuff and so, yeah, I'm in favor of improving. You know, the downtown, I'm in favor of improving the atmosphere for Canyon City, but I want numbers.
Mr. Meisner?
How much money are we talking about shaving off of that park budget?
I believe the fishing pier is somewhere in the 25,000 to 30,000 range and I would have to go back and look at the pavilion numbers. I could get those numbers for you.
Where are these pavilions specifically?
These would be replacing the existing pavilion structures.
Only the existing ones?
To match the rotary, yeah, style.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Okay, so here, here's kind of a two-part question. In your administrator's report, we're talking about leasing two lots for parking in downtown at the very bottom.
Correct.
So how, how soon do you think those negotiations might get wrapped up?
They should, I mean, I don't foresee it being a very long process.
Okay, so with that said, personally, I think we should wait and see, finish out our year, do the projects as planned and see what happens with, happens with our parking negotiations at that building. And if we don't make a good negotiation, then we can look at making it a parking lot. If not, then we can look at redeveloping it into that area into, or, well, I'm talking specifically down at Constantino's and the clock tower. I think we should wait and see what happens with those negotiations so that we can see where we need to put our efforts, if we need to plan more parking in that area or not.
Okay. I really think this is part of a vision committee meeting. We, we don't have figures. We're talking about it's going to get long-winded, I believe, and that should be a general government meeting or a vision, preferably a vision committee meeting because we're going back over what we had envisioned for money for a specific area. That way, our administrator can have time to get the figures together. We can have a more in-depth discussion of where the money is coming from or came from for the acquisition of the property and I believe it would be more appropriate in a vision committee meeting. That's where I would like to put it.
Well, and I guess that was my question, Mayor. Is the council even willing to put that on an agenda for a vision committee meeting?
Yes, I'm gonna, would like to put it on that, for that. Okay, can we do that?
We can.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I got one other thing.
Yes, sir.
When we get these sheets with everything that's coming up and everything, all right?
City council calendars?
Yes, so I don't try to guess what's going on. Is it possible, in other words, we have a general government committee, too, coming up?
You want the tentative schedule?
Yes, I would like to see that and the reason for it is because then we, we kind of know who's coming and what, what our focus could be with the question.
Absolutely, we can make that change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, let's move on. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. The public hearing is for Saint Scholastica Properties at, pardon?
Did we vote?
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. The, the hearing is for Saint Scholastica. This is a second reading and it's by title, a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 18, series 2019 entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Repealing Ordinance Number 29, Series 2017, and Rezoning Certain Property Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Known As 615 Pike Avenue. B, Consideration Adoption By Title Only of Resolution 22, Series 2019, and Title Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Terminating the Agreement Regarding the Property Located At 615 Pike Avenue. Could we have a report from administrator, Patrick?
Okay, Mayor and members of council, the, we've not received, we have received the resubmital of the information from the Saint Scholastica and we've received that this, this morning and we are going through those different conditions. We would recommend approval, again, as conditional approval on second reading.
Of both A and B?
Both A and B, yes.
Okay. Any questions of council?
What is he wanting? Say that again.
But we would recommend approval on second reading for ordinance number 18 and then we would also recommend approval of resolution 22. That is going to terminate the agreement of the previous owner of the Saint Scholastica site, their, their previous development agreement.
And why aren't we ready to actually vote with no pending items?
We just received the resubmital of their information today. So we would recommend approval conditioned upon the previous, the previous conditions. Nothing has changed there.
And what if they don't meet those conditions?
So the, the ordinance would not actually be recorded until the conditions are met.
Ms. Smith?
I was told that they have, they have by Friday also to put in their paperwork for the residential lot improvements for the zoning for that, is that right?
So by, by Friday, yeah, that, that's separate than this, this public hearing, but that Friday, the 6th, is their submittal for the minor subdivision.
Right, and so I would just, and that the city has said that they would do a five-day turnaround so that we can have approval on September 16th.
That's correct and, you know, whether or not the conditions are met, we're still able to move forward with minor subdivision until that those conditions have been met.
Patrick, do you have something to add?
If I may speak to the minor subdivision process, we have agreed to an expedited review of the project because it's a minor subdivision, it will still have to go to Planning Commission before it comes to council. So the Planning Commission date will be the 25th of September, I believe, that 4th Wednesday in September, and then it will go to council the first Monday in October for approval.
Why does it have to wait till September 25th to go to Planning Commission?
There is no regular Planning Commission meeting scheduled between now and then.
Ryan Stevens, can I request that there be a special Planning Commission meeting beforehand so that we can expedite this sooner?
Patrick, would you have enough time? I know you've, you've got your five-day referral, but you still have to put together staff reports and things like that for the Planning Commission meeting.
That, that is true and I know that there are a number of committee meetings, so finding a night where we could actually use this room for Planning Commission other than the scheduled date could be a bit of a challenge.
So when we, when we sat down with Mr. Lund and worked through the schedule, we, we worked through the different timing and different aspects and he, he was agreeable to this particular timing. If you'd like us to look and see if we can find something sooner, we can, but I, I don't know that it's going to be substantially different than the 25th.
We would still probably be looking at the same council date, the first meeting in October regardless.
Well, yeah, that's almost, I mean, that's three weeks. Time is money and he's already waited a long time.
Right, so, so he's going to submit on September 6th, there's a five, five-business-day turnaround, so that is going to have our referral partners getting information to Patrick by the 13th. Patrick's going to have to have time to review all the referral comments, so that will happen the week of the 16th and then prepare his staff report for the Planning Commission meeting, which is on the 25th.
Well, I would prefer to see Planning Commission on the 14th, or the 15th, if we can do something along those lines.
I, I think from a, from a, from a logistics standpoint, I think we've cut out about as much time as we possibly can in order to adequately review it and make sure that we're, we're still doing our due diligence on behalf of the people.
Ms. Hockes?
You know, I understand what kind of what Ashley's looking at with here, but I, I feel strongly, let's not push our staffs to do something so fast that maybe something gets overlooked and then, then we go back and we have problems with what's going on. Pat's got a lot of stuff on his table, Matt, and it's not going to kill the project if we wait until the date that they're talking about. And I, I hate to see us put extra pressure on our staff if they feel, you know, what they have developed already is going to be adequate to take care of the problem and the situation, so get it resolved in a timely manner. That's my feeling.
Okay, Mr. Meisner?
The, the items that are pending, are those the items from the August 5th letter?
Yes. Particularly as it pertains to item A, that would be the ordinance.
Mr. Hammerick?
I'd just like to comment that I think that, I think that there's some praise here that needs to be given to the city staff, to our acting administrator for trying to deal with this difficult issue. We did have Mr. Lund here last time very strong in how he viewed the process and what perhaps had gone awry. The fact, I take it that the fact that he's not here tonight to speak to us directly is a, is a good sign and if, you know, based on the assurances of the city administrator that, that this is something that, that is agreeable, that, that I think that it's appropriate to take, as Mr. Hockes says, the, the time to do this.
Okay, I have, I got an email from Mr. Lund. Let me read it, I will. "I am returning from my planned trip and cannot make the meeting tonight. I want to acknowledge and thank the city for taking specific steps to aid in the development of the Saint Scholastica property as it pertains to zoning and the subdivision process. The more aggressive schedule we came to, coupled with some other changes, is very positive for the project and I thank other developers in Canyon City. Thank you for your leadership and Ryan's." Signed, Phil Munn. He also says, Ashley, he says, "I'm seven miles up above Canada. Isn't this great?" Actually, seven miles, wow. Um, okay, I was going to say he was high in Canada, but I guess I can't do that in Colorado. Okay, never mind. Okay, Mr. Meisner, I'm sorry.
Phil Lund's representative is here. Did you have something to say on that matter?
No, Mr. Mayor, just read the email. I was just going to remind council that he's out of the country and he's not, he's not back in the country until this evening. So that's, that's why he's not in attendance this evening, but if there's any questions you have, I'm his representative. My name is Les Delmonde, I'm the architect, so I'm available.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
So, I've already expressed this concern to Ryan, but apparently, this whole process moved forward with these items identified in the August 5th memo being addressed with the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission apparently approved that pending these items. Is that correct?
Planning Commission did not see the August 5th memo.
I realize that, but the August 5th memo was based on items that was discussed in the planning.
It was, it was part of, they were culled from referral comments that we got from long-range planning, from current planning, myself, from the city engineer and what we did was put these together in that list to make them, to clarify them and sort of add emphasis to them, but the Planning Commission was aware of these as part of the referral comments that were part of their agenda packet.
But they did not see the memo? Excuse me, why wasn't the, the items in the August 5th memo mentioned by the Planning Commission?
They hadn't seen the August 5th memo. The memo didn't...
I realize that, but you're telling me that staff decided that those items were important because the Planning Commission had discussed them and you created this memo? Did the Planning Commission feel that those items were important? I don't understand where the memo just appeared from.
The, the Planning Commission approved the developments based on memos from individual staff departments. The August 5th memo is a compilation and sometimes a consolidation of those memos from the different departments.
So those been compiled for the Planning Commission meeting beforehand or at the beginning, those long-range or the beginning of the process?
There, yeah, the, memos had been going back and forth between developer and staff. Patrick, did the, weren't those memos referenced in the Planning Commission meeting?
Oh, they were part of the agenda packet, yes.
Any questions?
No, as I understand the process, the, the memo was prepared after the Planning Commission meeting and so that, because of the way that it worked out and if I understood the memo correctly, the memo was a clarification. There may have been additional language that had not necessarily been considered by the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, I was not at that meeting, but that, but it was a clarification that, so that everybody knew what the process was going to be and...
Correct. The August 5th memo was a consolidation and if there were conditions that had already been met, those were taken off of the previous memos and it was a consolidation of the outstanding items from the previous staff memos. There, there was, I know there, there was one item in there that, in particular, regarding screening around parking lots that might have some additional language in it and, you know, we, you know, we will, you know, we can concede that point. And, you know, there, there are a few other stylistic things that, you know, we can certainly look at, but I think for, for the most part, there, you know, the, the items that were in the staff memos previously, they, they were consolidated and I have mapped that, Patrick and I have actually mapped that back to the original memos.
So what are the things you say that you're willing to concede?
The, the screening. The parking lot screening. And then if there, you know, you know, there are different things like the, the style of the infrastructure matrix. We don't necessarily care about any style of the, of the infrastructure matrix. What we care about is that the items within the matrix are included. So fire hydrants and, and, you know, the different things that, I believe all those details have been worked out.
Mr. Meisner?
Well, council and mayor, I'm just going to go back to this. I, I get really confused when I read the recommendation in section five from the Planning Commission and I can read it, it will help clarify. It says staff recommends the planning, that the Planning Commission recommend that council approve the requested preliminary scholastic PDD. Doesn't mention anything about subject to a memo we're going to create later on with additional requirements. I get real confused when you make that recommendation to council and then somebody goes back and scrutinizes what the Planning Commission did and decide, maybe you really didn't do what you should have done, here's what you need to do, including apparently screening a parking lot.
So there was a, a fix that was mentioned at the, the previous council meeting. The process for PDD approval does not have as part of the zoning component a preliminary and a final. There is just one approval of zoning. When that was pointed out, the, the fix, and we consulted with the, the city attorney about this, was rather than having a second round of hearings on what would have been a final PDD, what we would do is consolidate the conditions of approval into a memo. We mentioned this to the applicant. The applicant was comfortable with this because it shortened their overall review process by not having to go through a second round on the zoning component. And what we would do is consolidate these into one memo and that memo would be what triggers recordation of the various documents associated with the zoning, the ordinance and the development plan. So the, the memo that you...
So the memo that you have that's dated August 5th is a culling of what was in the planning commission's staff report. Those referral comments that came from our long-range planning department, our engineering department, my own comments on the project, as well as all of the utility service providers, all of those were, in some cases, wordsmithed a bit, but they are essentially substantively the same conditions that were contained in that staff report.
Did you not feel it was important to recommend that in Section 5?
As I said, the planning commission's staff report was written under the understanding that there was a preliminary and a final process. Subsequent to the planning commission's approval, we learned that there isn't. There's only going to be one set of hearings on the zoning.
So are you saying this is part of the complexities of the PDD process that is just an absolute nightmare?
The PDD process, the way it's written, assumes that there is some sort of co-mingling between zoning and subdivision. That's very unusual in my experience. Zoning tends to be strictly with the uses and the height and bulk limitations associated with what you're going to do with a piece of property. Subdivision is all about creating the individual lots and tracks and outlots and rights of way and easements that will be necessary to actually have the property serviceable and usable for building purposes. This process co-mingles them, and I've never dealt with a project like that before. So yes, there are some complexities, and we are hoping to, in the near future, bring you revisions to the PDD so that it is only about zoning.
How near in the future?
Hopefully before the end of this year.
Lester, do you have any comments?
Without getting into specifics, I don't know that we need to belabor the point. Commissioner Meisner, your concern about whether or not we're going to meet the conditions or stipulations of the August 5th memo, I can tell you that we're meeting, we have no issues with the August 5th memo. The only issues we had was the timing of the August 5th memo. We thought we were done. If there were a co-mingling or a compilation of comments, it would have been within the city, we wouldn't have been part of that conversation. So the August 5th memo is a surprise to us, to the team. But to allay your fears about whether or not we will agree to them or whether or not we have any objections to anything in that memo, that memo's been compiled in our work, it's sitting in Patrick's inbox right now, or probably printed out on his desk at some point, and redistributed. So in terms of us meeting it, we feel like we have. If there's an I or a T that's wrong, we'll fix it, but that's the contingency you're giving us this evening. So we have no problem moving forward. We very much appreciate your effort to push a planning commission meeting up to help us out, but again, Mr. Lund, and I won't speak for him, but I think we're comfortable, as long as we keep moving forward, we're comfortable with the dates we've been given right now. So if we can meet the 6th, if we can meet the 13th, if we can meet August 1st, we're comfortable with that. We don't want another memo, and we don't want to miss October. That's our objective. So, questions?
Ms. Smith?
I do have a question for you, Lester. Thank you for being here today and being willing to answer some questions.
Certainly.
What is, I know that you probably can't speak for Mr. Lund, but if appropriate, can you answer how comfortable you are with the new requirements for parking screening and the style infrastructure matrices?
Well, the stylistic infrastructure matrix, just don't even worry about that. That's a table that we put in a document and it's on a drawing. It's not a big deal, I really don't care. Whatever you want it to look like, I'll make it look like that. In terms of screening and those kinds of things, I think those are planning and aesthetic changes. We're willing to work with it. We've been given, I don't know, five different, five different things that we can comply, and we can choose two. So they're not onerous. It just feels like that should have been a discussion we had a month before we were here, or two months, or three months before we were here, but it's not onerous. We've applied it to the development guide, we're willing to comply with it moving forward.
Mr. Meisner?
Somebody else got a question?
I just, what I'd like to say is, I appreciate staff, I appreciate everything that you've done to move this project forward, but I would appreciate it a lot more if we took our lessons learned and didn't get ourselves in this situation again to where we're having to vote on something that hasn't been seen yet. I'm comfortable with it because I feel comfortable that your organization will do what it needs to do to make it right, but moving forward, let's just take our lessons learned.
Well, I think Mr. Lund and I are very eager to be able to sit with staff at some point when they're ready to start getting into the minutia of the PDD process and at least express our lessons learned through it too, to help their process as they begin to work through a new PDD process. So we're eager to participate in that.
Okay. I think it's sure to see what Patrick had said, that they're going to take a look at it and they'll have changes that should come to council, and I understand that and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the staff that's working on that. It'll be good for you, it'll be good, how many PDDs come along in a lifetime practically, and this is unique, and I understand that and I appreciate it, having been through subdivisions and stuff, that's, to me, what I've seen would have been great to have.
Right.
Okay? And so we need to flush through it, and it'll be a good process. And they're going to work on it, and we appreciate that, and it will come to council. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, thank you. Ms. Smith?
I just want to thank Phil Lund and Lester for their eagerness to help the city sit down and talk about solutions. I really want to have that conversation as well, where we can really sit down and figure out what went wrong and how we can make it better in specific instances. And also to take those lessons and look forward to future development that is coming to Canyon City. I know I really wish, you know, we have a new developer and investors at St. Scholastica, I really wish we didn't have any of those bumps. I really wanted to welcome them into town without any problems, though there's always going to be problems no matter what the process goes through, but I would have liked it to go on smoother, and I apologize that it hasn't. But we are going to learn from this, and we are going to make changes, and welcome your comments and help in doing that. I look forward to making those changes to the PDD and having that discussion before the end of the year. Just for clarification, when Michael Butler was going to develop St. Scholastica, he wanted to use the PUD process, and that's why we changed the PUD process first in that anticipation. But now we had a new buyer who wanted to do the PDD process instead, so unfortunately, we weren't prepared and ready to make that a better experience. But I am committed to moving forward in the future, making that possible for other developments. And as we're looking forward to Second 61 coming in and Enbrydell doing a number of major projects in the city, I want to make sure that we look ahead, and we're well-prepared for what they need and for the things that they want, and the changes that we may need to make to codes to make it easier, and that we get those referrals from those other entities and weigh in advance, and so there are no surprises in the future. And also want to applaud staff for doing expeditions so that Phil Lund is comfortable with the schedule that we've presented, and look forward to the development at St. Scholastica. We are really excited to see that piece of property go from being abandoned and robbed and full of vandalism and asbestos floating through the air for the whole neighborhood. Now it's going to be a beautiful tribute to Canyon City and to the original land there, and it's providing needs for attainable housing, for new jobs and development, and I love that it also has green space and that the neighbors are happy with the new plan. So thank you for all of that, and we look forward to continuing our partnership together. Thank you.
Okay. We need to form a conclusion here. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, are we going to do these as two separate?
No, I have to, I have to close, I'm going to go ahead.
Are you going to close something?
If we're done, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Let's get going.
Okay. We're going to close the public hearing at this time, thank you, and we're going to call for a motion in a second. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council, I moved that we approve ordinance number 29, ordinance number 29, series of 2017, and I'm not sure where I include this exclusion, but we're striking item eight of the conditions or pending approvals on the development guide. Ordinance 18, yeah. Ordinance 18, series 29, with that striking of item eight.
Second.
Are we striking that in the correct ordinance, right?
So you want to remove the conditions?
That's what you said.
Well, no, we just, we would, the proposal would be to prove it pending, them meeting the conditions.
We just talked about not having to screen a parking lot. Did we not?
No, they said that they were fine with coming up with two of the five options for parking lot screening.
Okay. I withdraw my motion. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hammack?
I move to approve ordinance number 18, series of 2019, rezoning certain property to the PDD zone on second reading, subject to the condition that prior to the recording of this ordinance and the PDD plan, the outstanding items contained in staff's letter dated August 7th, August, excuse me, August 5th, 2019, are completed.
And you'll have to, well, no, you're going to have to deal with A and B.
Oh.
You just dealt with A. We have to do them separate?
Yeah, you have to do them separately.
All right. Okay. Motion's been made on A, which is the second reading of the ordinance 18, series 2019. Motion's been made. I have a second. Ms. Gonzalez seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Thank you. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Okay, then we need to have a motion for B, which is consideration and adoption by title of Resolution 22, series 19. Would like to make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where you are.
Well, we're in 9B. We had, we did the first one, which is the rezoning, which we repealed, and now we're going to terminate the agreement, which was to the previous owner. So we have to terminate that agreement. Okay? Would you like to make that? Mr. Hammack?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt by title-only Resolution 22, series 2019, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Terminating the Agreement Regarding the Property Located at 615 Pike Avenue."
Okay. Do you second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. All right, we have a discussion on number 10, which is the Building Facade Improvement Grant. We have a discussion from our acting and city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the last city council meeting, we made the changes regarding the number of bids. We've reduced that to one. And then the time requirements of the business being at that location, we've also removed that as well. I believe we've made all other changes for, that was requested by council. So I would ask council to consider this as a new program for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, council, page two. I had asked last week, but I'm still confused about the replacement enhancement of sidewalks adjacent to the building. In terms of that being part of the program. Why is that?
You're correct. We can strike that because we do have the sidewalk replacement program.
Who's replacing the sidewalks on the corner of Third and Main?
That is a joint program. The property owner is replacing those.
Often it's joint, yeah.
That's a joint project?
The cities don't replace the sidewalk.
Yeah, we're putting in 50% of the funds, but the project is being done by the property owner.
At Third and Main?
Third and Main.
Why are they using city vehicles and city equipment?
I will have to double check, but that was a project that came through the sidewalk replacement program.
That's a city project.
Well, I don't know about Canyon City, but in Florence, we replaced the sidewalks in front of our commercial building, but it was the same thing. We paid for all the supplies, but the city did the labor.
I'll double check, check that for you, Councilmember Meisner, but that is, that is part of our sidewalk replacement program, and that was an application that the property owner at Third and Main applied for.
Yeah, when I did sidewalks, I paid for the material and the city did the sidewalk. I mean, it's, the city did the actual removal and repair of the sidewalk, I paid for the material.
Okay. Maybe that's what they're doing then, because it's city vehicles, or people that are dressed just like city. One of the two.
I will double check the program.
They even have trucks that look like ours.
But don't the sidewalk funds, they only spend so much per year, and I think they get eaten up pretty quickly. So if a business wanted to take advantage of this to improve the sidewalks, which is usually a safety issue, which is for us, people, if the sidewalks get uneven, people can trip and fall, which we had happen in front of our business, and that was our incentive for fixing it.
Right, yes. Some years it gets used more than others, and, you know, we're trying to encourage more usage of that particular program. So we can strike this as part of the program, this replacement enhancement of sidewalks adjacent to the building.
Does everybody understand that we're taking that out of the facade improvement grant issue for the repair of sidewalks? Since we already have that in place, seems a little redundant. Mr. Meisner?
Page two, under submittal requirements, item three says three written bids.
That's my fault.
You're going to remove that. That was removed the last time. Mr. Hammer?
I would just say that what the city, acting city administrator has done is modified the application requirements on page three, and that there are, that I would recommend that those requirements be reflected in the verbiage preceding them. Because that, but the application requirements look good to me.
Okay.
Well...
Go ahead.
Page three, I think, under application requirements, item number two has to be rewritten. I don't know how you can have a lowest bid when you only have one. Well, I guess that is lowest.
You could, you could say one or more written bids.
Well, we decided, I thought we just agreed that we weren't going to do the bid thing.
Yes, we did, last time.
And it's still there. Because somebody else decided to put it in there.
No, it just wasn't taken out.
No, because before it was three, and now it's one.
Should say estimate, I think.
I don't have a problem with an estimate, but, you know, we're still talking about one written bid, and then we're talking about the lowest bid, which is contrary to what we had agreed to the last meeting.
So I, yeah, I substituted bid for estimates. We, you know, we can reflect that verbiage.
So it will say estimate instead of bids? I think that's appropriate. Got to know where you're going. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Then with those changes, which our administrator noted, we're going, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we approve the Building Facade Improvement Grant Program with the following edits or amendments. On page two, under submittal requirements, third bullet, that it will say that the applicant must submit at least one written estimate and strike the last of the sentence. And then on page three... And then on page three, again, under application requirements, second bid, one written estimate. And the applicant may choose the contractor of their choice.
Also replacing the sidewalks.
And also-
Section two.
And also amending the sidewalk replacement on page two. Striking bullet one, two, three, four, five, six, nine, ten. And that is my motion.
Does everybody understand that motion now?
Absolutely.
Second.
I'm sure you do. I don't see any eyes glazed over. Okay, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Gonzalez, thank you, second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, sorry, Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to number eleven, which is life safety grant. Could we have a discussion from our administrator?
Yes, Mayor and members of council, we've received an application for the life safety grant program. Stan Bullis has submitted an application on behalf of Unbridled Holdings for 505 Macon Avenue. That's the Fremont Center for the Arts building, the old post office. They went out and as part of our program, the life safety program does ask for multiple bids. They were not able to receive multiple bids. They've been trying since the beginning of July to get other vendors to come down, but based on the size of the project, they were only able to get one bid. And that's, is in the amount of $60,175. As part of the grant, the, the grant covers 75% of that expense, so the city would be covering $45,131.25 on a reimbursement basis. So this will be before council for approval.
Can you at liberty tell us what the bid was for?
Uh, yeah, so it is for a fire monitoring system and that is, the materials are, and the work is in your packets. The vendor is TechServe and this particular bid did meet the requirements of the fire departments. The, the vendor did call and talk to the fire department regarding their requirements and it does satisfy those, those requirements.
Okay. I knew, I just wanted to get that in the record. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
What was our budget for that, that grant this year?
$50,000.
Okay.
Mr. Hammer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that included in this scope of work is the wireless option for preservation of the structure and to maintain the historic aesthetics of the building. And so this is something above and beyond perhaps what, what would normally be done and that's a good thing.
Okay. Mr. Hockes?
Did we get a, a letter, a memo or anything from the fire department saying that they were okay with it? Do we have anything in writing?
We, I will have to go back. We did have correspondence in via email going back and forth between our building official and the fire departments.
And the only reason I say, when we have something like this, you know, I, I would hope that we have something in writing because we were looking at something with the fire suppression system. I would hate for down the roadway, something to come in later on and something goes wrong. I'd hope that wouldn't happen. Then all of a sudden, somebody said, oh, they didn't ever follow through with what they needed to follow through.
Sure.
So it's, it's a protection for us as a city to have something in writing to go along with everything else that we do with that.
Absolutely. We, we do have emails going back and forth between the building department, the fire departments and I, I can provide that for council. I do want to, you know, make sure that I'm clear. This, this is a fire monitoring system, not a fire suppression system.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Ashley, Ms. Smith?
Ryan, I have a couple of questions. You said they had trouble getting multiple bids because the project was, because of the size of the project. Was the size of the project too big or too small and will this have future implications for other projects?
Sure. So, so the, the one project or one vendor that they were working with was Cintas and for, uh, the comment they got was the project was too big for, for that particular scope of work. Um, I, I don't know about other vendors, but that, that was the one that was specifically cited to me.
Okay. And I just wanted to ask another question for future references. This is a life safety grant application and would a business be able to apply to change their historic building to be ADA compliant? Would that count as a life safety application or not?
I, I don't believe we looked at ADA compliance as part of it, but, you know, it's, I think it's something we could probably review. You know, it, yeah, it, it wasn't the original intent of, of the project.
Suppression system.
Yeah. I was just curious about that. And, and I'm just really happy that this grant has been taken advantage of. That was the purpose. It's been out there, we offered it and now it's being used. I anticipate that it will be used for the next couple of years to come. I mean, I really hope so. And anything we can do to help make it more affordable for these historic buildings to be given new life is a good investment for the entire city of Canyon City. So, thank you to staff and city council for doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Meisner?
Just a clarification, the bid that we see in, attached to our agenda is not a wireless bid, it's a wired bid. Just so we don't give somebody the mis, the, the wrong impression. They're stating that if we want a wireless option, we're going to, they're going to have to reevaluate some things.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay. We had a motion in a second and discussion. Any more discussion? Would you call a roll, please?
Well, Mayor, I would like to first make a motion.
We had a motion, I thought.
It was on the previous one.
Okay, well then go ahead and make a motion, Ms. Smith.
That we very gladly approve the life safety grant application for 505 Macon Avenue, the Fremont Center of the Arts.
Second.
Question's made in second. Any discussion on that motion? Now would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Number twelve, job description for city administrator position. Mr. Administrator or acting administrator, would you like to give us a report?
I suspect this one might be me.
Mr. Hoffman, would you give us a report?
Attorney. You, you have in front of you the job description for the city administrator that would be put out in an ad and so we wanted to get your final approval. My understanding is there's one very, very minor addition we would like to make in the first paragraph under essential functions and that's to add the department related to the museum, which was not in the original, was not one of the original departments that was listed, but other than that, we've not received any other feedback other than that it's ready to go and so we wanted to confirm that before putting it out on the street.
I had the one that we, that Catherine had sent out, cause that seemed to be fine. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have a copy in front of me.
Correct.
Catherine had sent it out in your emails.
Well, it was sent in the email, but I want to make sure it's the most current one.
It is. It's the one that Catherine sent out.
And it's the one that includes that the mayor will help set the agenda with the city administrator for the meetings?
I think that was added.
I will double check and make sure.
There, I can grab it.
Wait, yes.
Yes.
But I'll confirm it before it goes out.
Yes, that's the one I saw. Mr. Meisner?
I'm just trying to bring that up because I, I checked all my changes except for the addition of the HR. And the-
HR is in there.
Is now in there?
It is.
Okay.
It is in, under the first bullet point directs all city departments, including administration, community development, human resources.
I just wanted to point out that I, I did respond to Catherine with a couple of, with a typo that was in there, but that, I'm sure that's been taken care of.
Okay.
She assured me that it had been taken care of.
And yes, the coordination with the mayor is in the fourth bullet point, so it's there.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that was the one I saw, I think today or yes, last week, so. Okay. Mr. Meisner, you are concentrating heavily on something or other. Would you have a comment or, cause I'm going to call for a motion here.
I, I just, there was a couple of things that I thought about after I'd read it and I just read it and we're good.
Okay.
Was that about the civility part?
Civility?
Yeah. There was a part in there about that too, wasn't there?
Oh, well, that, yeah, but that got added. Well, not civility, but some customer service.
Yeah.
That, that was added under-
Yeah.
It's been added.
Skills. Effective customer relations and positive communication skills.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Meisner for going through that and making all of those changes and those recommendations, so thank you for each of you that did that. I really liked each of those that were made.
I concur to them when, by email. I don't get thanked or what?
Thank you for your concurrence.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to have a motion on this then. Would we like to make a motion? Mr. Meisner?
Mayor and council, I move that we approve the modified or updated job description for the city administrator position.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Meisner?
I'd just like to publicly make the note that that description now includes a requirement for residency in the county of Fremont.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Um, I just also wanted to point out that, that it was really important, at least to me and I think for many of the city council members, that this was an open and due process and that we really wanted to ensure that there was a proper search done to make sure that Canyon City gets the best city administration, administrator that we can find.